...live on the city's YouTube channel, and it's at westcavina.org/live. We are currently live as the time is now 6:30 PM. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you all for your patience.
...of the West Covina City Council to order. While it's not on the agenda, please rise so we can have a moment of silence, after which, Mr. Toma, will you lead us in a pledge?
Please face our nation's flag for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Toma.
Here.
Councilmember Warshaw.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Yeah.
Mayor Spence.
Okay, before we start, I got asked a question about why we're having a special meeting and why it was organized this way, so I want to go through a quick timeline so everybody understands what's going on. On May 4th, I was informed by the city manager that he communicated with the other four council members about what happened in Costa Mesa. He had been informed by Chief Taylor after he received a call from Costa Mesa. I was not involved in that communication. On May 7th, I had very brief e-contact with Member Toma during the city selection committee. On May 7th, we had a special community budget meeting here where several council members were present. On May 9th, I was at the sanitation orientation with Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. On May 11th, I was at the Hearst Ranch with Members Toma, Warshaw, and Johnson. That was also the day that our regular meeting for the May 15th agenda was published. On May 14th, we had a special meeting where I was present. That's also where the press was acting on their anonymous tip about Costa Mesa, and that was also the same day I received the first call from a police investigator from that city. On May 15th, we had a regular meeting, and no member asked to have anything agendized. So it was timed to have it agendized by May 15th, but it was chosen not to. Under the rules that we have adopted by the city of West Covina, three, either the city mayor or the, or three council members can request a special meeting, and that's why we're here, is three members did that. I was not involved in those discussions. That also happens to be May 16th, the day the city manager leaves. So I hope that explains why we're having a special meeting. I feel very strongly that the mayor rotation should be something that's done at a regular public meeting, so that, and one that's noticed with plenty of time. Before we get to public comment, at this point, I want to announce that I'm resigning as mayor of the city of West Covina. And, excuse me. You can clap and do your dances afterwards, but please give me the courtesy of speaking. I was born in this city. By the way, I'm resigning effective June 1st, so that we can have the mayor's rotation on that June 5th meeting, where I think it should be properly noticed and the entire public can know what's going on. So I want to make that clear. And of course, the council can do whatever they want. I was born here in West Covina. I love West Covina. This is where I made my home. I didn't have to stay here. I could have gone out to Ranch of Cucamonga or Orange County, or where everybody else goes from these cities. I do want to thank the people that have made very kind comments to me over the last year and a half. I want to thank Councilmember Warshaw for allowing me to be mayor for the last six months. I appreciate that. I appreciate your kindness over the last, over this time period. We knew each other, but we didn't know each other well, and we disagree on stuff. Of course, I can say that about everybody. We disagree on stuff, but I cannot repay the kindness that you've given me on a personal level, so thank you. Member Toma, we don't agree on much, I don't think, although I'm proud that, Mr. Warshaw, you and I, we were able to bring Mark Taylor on as police chief, because that wouldn't have happened if you and I didn't agree on that. So I'm proud about that. But I appreciate the fact you've never lied to me, you've never faked compassion towards me, and that you've always been honest and upright with me, and I appreciate that very much, because I value that. To the city of West Covina, I'm not resigning from the city council. I got your back. There's lots of things over the next few months until my term is up that we have to decide, and at this point, I think my voice can be very valuable in making those decisions. I think I've been a valuable voice on behalf of taxpayers here. I understand how public policy works. I understand the impacts on people, and many times, we've seen the council change direction towards what I'm looking at. I was the only vote against the three-story townhomes next to 10, 10 feet away from single-family homes in the downtown plan, and now the city's finally changing that, and that's good. So I think it's an important voice for me to be there till November, so I will not be resigning from the city council. I want to apologize to the distraction that my personal failings have had on the city. I want to apologize mostly to my family. You know, my daughter, I wrote a nice note to Chris, and I really appreciated when she told me about it, you know, but they've had to put up with, you know, I have, I have tough skin. When I was in the hospital in 2016 after the accident, the doctor tried to give me a shot, and he said I had really thick skin, and I told him he had no idea. He had no idea. But there are people in this community that are mean and bigoted towards people that have addiction, and those people have taken it out on my kids. And that is what I'm most sad about, when I have a teacher tell my son that he better shape up or he'll end up like his dad. That's wrong. That is wrong. And I hope that when we do public comment today, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, who will be running that meeting, that you discourage people from attacking people with addictions, because whatever happens in Costa Mesa, whatever happens, if somebody is having a medical emergency, call 911 no matter what. I don't want that to be discouraged. I want people to get medical attention if they need it and not worry about what's going to happen. And for the 1 in 12 people that suffer from addiction, that deal with addiction, I want them to get help too. I can only go one day at a time. This is my day, and I've decided to resign. It goes against some of my better instincts. Those of you that know me know I like to fight. I'm not wired right that way. I like to fight, but I think it's in the best interest of West Covina I step down as mayor at this time, effective June 1st, so we can have a regular organizational meeting in June 5th, I believe is the day. Is that correct? June 5th, so that we can have that done out in public, so everyone can have input into that mayoral rotation. So, obviously, the city council decided not to do that, but again, I just want to thank you for the privilege of being here for the limited time I was. I appreciate it very, very much, and I appreciate the kindness of some of you out there. Some of you that have shared stories with me about your old families, about yourselves, your fathers, your brothers, people I don't even know that have come up to me. I really appreciate that. That means a lot to me. So with that, I will go ahead and turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson, and if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and excuse myself. So, have a great day, and I'll see you guys at some point in the next few weeks. Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to open public comment, so if anyone still wants to have a speak tonight, I have your, I have your cards up here. I'll call you up and order, and whatever you wrote, um, four minutes, three minutes, or five minutes, or we didn't leave a time, we'll just assume it's five minutes. The first one up is Steve Hurford.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. My name is Steve Hurford. I'm a longtime resident, lifetime resident, like Mayor Spence of the city of West Covina. I served 25 years on the city council, six years as the mayor of West Covina. I'm not an enemy of Mike Spence. I actually supported him when he ran for city council, and I'm not here to destroy the man. He has issues. I think from my experience on the dais of the city council, and I think other council members would echo the same thing, drug addiction is not something to be an elected official and to continue as a leader in the community. It, what we've seen, I woke up Tuesday morning, and on all three TV channels, the story was told of the mayor in a hotel room, unconscious on the floor with drug paraphernalia surrounding him. That same story was played out in the newspapers, that same story was played out on Facebook numerous times with millions of comments from people about the mayor of West Covina. That image of our city is not the image any of us in this community want to portray. Mr. Spence has a drug addiction problem, and the best thing for him would be to resign his seat on city council. The city staff in this city, the residents of the community, our children, everyone in this community says no to drugs, and we have to make a strong message to our citizens and the people that we serve. And by having an elected official who's a drug addict, who has failed, and I left out before, in every one of those news reports that came out last Tuesday, it was also mentioned that a year and a half ago, the mayor was arrested on methamphetamine, driving under the influence, which he pled, I guess, too, and he's on probation for. So it's not the first time. And also, they mentioned that he had a DUI back in 1998, which none of us, you know, prior to that accident, and two, a year and a half ago, knew about. So the addiction continues. For the sake of his life, for the sake of our citizens of West Covina, our image in the city, what we all represent, our beliefs, he needs to resign. And I know he says he's not going to resign. I hope he thinks of his family, I hope he thinks of his kids, number one. You can serve your community in many ways, but if you're not a healthy individual, don't take this stress on, don't take this extra burden on. City council is nothing more than any of the other people in this community serving, and anybody can do it. I've always said that. You just have to put in the time and learn the knowledge. So one individual is not indispensable. I value his life. The only way he's going to get it straight is if he gets out of this environment and gets help. And so I'm asking Mayor Spence, or former Mayor Spence tonight, to give serious thought to resigning. It's the only, only thing that I think this city should accept. Removal as mayor is just nothing more than a, it's a ceremonial position, it's not any more different than a city council member. So, Mr. Spence, I hope that for your sake, for the city's sake, for your family's sake, you resign your seat on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is Dana Sykes.
Good evening, gentlemen. I couldn't agree with Mr. Hurford more, Mayor Hurford, excuse me. Drug addiction, he talked about medical, people seeking medical help. That's what he needs. He needs to go into extensive rehab, not to mention, he's on probation. He violated his probation. He's probably going to jail. So, fact of the matter is, he should resign, not just as a mayor, but as a council member, not because I'm trying to stick somebody in there. This is purely for the reason Mayor Hurford just espoused. The man needs help, and it's not good for our city to have someone that really, truthfully, we can't 100% rely on, because as a council member, we putting our, our fate, our city's fate in your hands. I can't say with 100% certainty, I have a lot of confidence in a man who's on drugs and can't control his addiction. The man needs help. He needs to be in long-term rehab, and he also, like I say, he's probably going to jail. So you really should consider those when you're considering his fate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gutierrez. I'm a resident of the city of West Covina, and I would like to let the council know my beliefs over the situation that's occurring today. I believe Mr. Spence should not only resign, but also that the city council should take the action today, which the meeting was called for, to rotate the mayoral, the mayoral position, to take away that position from Mr. Spence, because as mayor, he's supposed to be a role model to not only in the future leaders of tomorrow, but to all of the city of West Covina, and be a leader to, not even, even to our law enforcement and so forth. An article that was released by the San Gabriel Valley Tribune an hour and a half ago stated that the 911 call, during the call, the woman describing Spence is unconscious but breathing erratically, and eventually she said that the body begins jerking as if he was having a seizure. She goes on to tell this dispatcher, she believes he overdosed on heroin because she knows that he has used it in the past, and she has also said she saw a syringe nearby. Statements like that, and for other cities to see information like that disappoints not only the voters of West Covina, but myself as well, as a person who has autism asperger's, as a person who grew up in the foster care system. The one thing I was taught in the foster care system was to never use my past as a reason to fail in life, and I urge Mr. Spence to do get help, and those who are suffering from a drug abuse problem, that they do know that there is resources our, the state has to offer, and I urge the council today to vote to rotate the mayoral position, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council, city staff, and members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, 40-year resident, retired deputy sheriff, former mayor of West Covina, and currently I'm a commissioner for the LA County, and I have been a public servant for all of my adult life. You know, a lot of us here have experienced some hardships, and my background is, is one of some hardships. I grew up in South Central LA, and therefore I know about poverty, crime, drugs, poor education, and a community with poor to bad leadership. I joined the LA County Sheriff's Department, and that's also when I found out about West Covina. A lot of my fellow deputies, my training officers, leaders in the Sheriff's Department, and in LA County DA's office, public defender's office, and my mentors, they made their home right here in West Covina and in the San Gabriel Valley area. We often socialized right here in West Covina. They also pointed out places where I could buy a home and safely raise a family and enjoy life. I appreciated what I saw here, and I've been here for more than 40 years. I want to ensure that my children and my neighbors' children will have the best of West Covina going forward. I moved here in the late 70s, and my biggest mistake was taking too much for granted. I assumed that the West Covina we know was going to just naturally always be the great and beautiful place. I was wrong. I have learned that there are unimaginable negatives that can happen. Undesirable things and people can infiltrate, especially when we fail to be involved and to do our utmost in protecting our community and our environment. I voted with hyperpensity, but I didn't vote with awareness. The awareness that was so important and that I needed to properly protect my community and my relative life. That is why I got involved at city hall back in 2006, and that is why I am here tonight. Mayor Mike Spence has proven that he cannot be trusted and cannot be relied on to do the right thing. His private activity and his lifestyle is unpredictable. It is unhealthy for himself and our city. For more than 25 years, he has been a leader in his church. He has been an elected official on the West Covina School Board and on the West Covina City Council. He has admitted that at all that time, he has a major flaw in his integrity. As an elected official, he has been in front of the people making decisions about the education of our children, public and school safety, and many other important matters. Then, when he thought that no one was watching, he used illegal drugs, endangered himself, endangered other members of the public, and he has damaged and destroyed property. It appears that the people in the justice system have failed to give him the assistance, the proper discipline, and the oversight that is needed to keep him in check, and that is a problem that we need to try to correct. Until now, West Covina has not had a bad reputation, and now we are in the news in a bad way. And this city council and this city are now very aware of Spence's propensities, and when we fail to use our power of correction, then we are all directly liable and at a financial risk. Risks that we are not in a financial position to take. Our city already has serious money problems. We have a reputation that plays a key role in the health and well-being of our business community and the whole city. Tonight, I ask the city council to follow through with why this special West Covina city council meeting was called, and I ask you to vote to protect the city of West Covina. I urge the four of you to hold him to his promise and to vote to remove and replace Mayor Michael Herman Spence. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is CD. Whoever that is, is it, that's the name? Is it JD, JD here? No, it says CD. Okay, we'll put it off to the side. Next would be Bill Robinson then.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Bill, resident Bill Robinson. I'm not bashful about sharing my ignorance with anyone, so here I am in front of a microphone. Perhaps there is a shortage. I dissent against most of what's been said so far. I asked before the meeting if a Costa Mesa police report has even been... I asked before the meeting if a Costa Mesa Police report has even been released yet. And I didn't get an answer. So I assume this is based on newspaper articles and TV news. That's not evidence, that's fluff. This is a fluff meeting. I prefer to, you know, have a police report to look at and have some actual facts before I, you know, go off on a tangent. So that's my number-one point. Perhaps there is a shortage in the public discourse of the discussion of love. What is the most loving way to react to an agenda item like this? Clearly, our nation is descending into a moral vacuum on many levels. In an era when New York real estate developers are laundering Russian mob cash, what about positive local community moral standards? Many kinds of leadership exist. I'll award Mr. Spence a C for his legislative and policy behavior, but ethics and moral leadership area, maybe that gets a D or a D minus. Not an F because we're all not perfect ourselves, and can we afford to be too confident in our own judgments, especially when there is no evidence in front of us? I mean, a newspaper article is nothing. The era of zero tolerance and three strikes are long past. In a spirit of tolerance and forgiveness, I think we should take a step back and not rush to judgment. Where there's smoke, there isn't necessarily fire. Christ, as he hung dying on the cross, said, "Forgive them, Father, for they know not what they do." Well, do we know what we're doing here tonight? Perfection escapes us, myself included. We cannot afford to be too judgmental. We all could avoid harsh judgments unless we are paid professional judges. This is truly a sad occasion. The biggest victim here is Mike, and his alleged behavior sets a poor example. I'm injured by this. We're all injured by this. I never voted for Mike, and I probably never will. But the people that voted for Mike deserve their full four years' worth that he offered four years ago, and he deserves to serve in an unhindered fashion. My own personal values are in the toilet here, diminished. I cannot fathom these apparent circumstances for a public official's conduct. I'll recover, but what about Mike? I urge tolerance, forgiveness, until this picture clarifies. Maybe the police report is mistaken or open to alternative explanations. Perhaps we can help Mr. Spence find his better self and wait for better angels to appear. I recommend a 12-step program, applying the maximum measure of community love and forgiveness. We can overcome this obstacle together with community support, maintaining this council as a rich, diverse, argumentative, and favorable government.
Bill, that's it. Thank you. Alan Wilson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Warsaw, Wu, and Homer. My name is Alan Wilson. I come from Diamond Bar. But I did live in West Covina for 12 years, and I graduated from South Hill High School. 15 years ago, I came here under different circumstances. You had another elected official who tried to serve on the City Council and the school board at the same time. Roger Hernandez tried to pull the wool out of his eyes. It didn't work. I came here to ask him to resign from the school board and serve his community as a council member. He didn't budge until he got a warning from the district attorney that if he had to resign, he could face the lawsuit. He finally resigned from the rolling unified school board as a board member and served his community. I've come here 15 years later under different circumstances. You have a mayor, and this city is clouded, and this city should not be cloud, have a dark cloud under their shoulders. Serving as mayor is a privilege, not a right. It's in with your power, and it's on the agenda. You can decide tonight to strip him of mayor and choose someone else to serve this community that you can move forward with the dignity. It's unfortunately, Mr. Spence, that's not here tonight to hear the voices of the community. Mr. Spence didn't want to hear it. It's unfortunate. You know, when you're a politician, you take the heat. But if you can't take the heat, then you should not be on the day. Mr. Spence should resign as a council member. I hope you do the right decision tonight to strip him of mayor and choose someone else. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Right now, that is the last card we have. I would ask if there's anyone wanting to say something. If not, I will close it. Okay, at this time, I will close to probably comment. I know we had one resident that made a statement about what actual facts we have. The only thing I would ask is our assistant city attorney, I mean, our assistant city manager would ask our attorney, do we have proof about the accusations that were brought against our former member Spence now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. At this time, I would like to let the city attorney, Kimberly Hall Barlow, answer that.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council, members of the public, the police investigation in Costa Mesa is not complete as yet. However, the responding officer has reported that he found Mr. Spence in the hotel room unconscious and non-responsive. Paramedics revived him with Narcan and drugs, illegal drugs, and Vug parfumalia were found in the room. Today, the 911 call was released and indicates that an individual called to report that she believed he had overdosed on heroin and requesting that paramedics and the police respond. The investigation is still continuing, and that's pretty much all I'm able to say at this point. But I feel confident that the responding officer has accurately reported his observations.
Thank you. So at this time, I would ask if there's any council members like to say anything, or you put it this way. Mayor Spence offered to resign as of June 1st. I would like to hear from each of the council members, what is their opinion on that? And then we would decide as a whole body which way we're going to move. Are we going to move forward where we came here tonight for, or we want to move forward that way? That's up to Councilman Toma.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I should say as a preface that, you know, if anybody has a problem with substance abuse or alcohol abuse, they should be encouraged to reach out for help, whether it's an emergency or otherwise, because there are people out there who will help you, professionals. And I hope that anyone with that kind of problem gets support, because there is no way to get better unless you acknowledge the problem and then acknowledge responsibility for the acts, even if they are caused by the problem, drug addiction, substance abuse addiction. I mean, many of us have family histories or no people with family histories. It is devastating to addicts and families alike and loved ones. And I want to make sure that anyone who has that kind of problem doesn't feel that they can't go to people to seek out help for that, and I encourage you to do that. The mayor position, and this has been discussed before, the mayor position, the mayor serves at the pleasure of the council. The mayor is not elected directly by the people. And the information wasn't out there at the time of our election. I do appreciate that Mr. Spence has offered to resign. However, I think that the people, the members of the community, have looked to us. And I assume I'm not the only one who's gotten many calls and notices, questions about the issue here. And I think they look to us as well for what our values are when it comes to an issue like this and what we stand for. I've made this presentation before. It's not the first time. Back when the first criminal charge happened, I thought it was inappropriate to elevate someone who was even criminally charged, let alone afterwards with a conviction. So I do think that we still have a responsibility to express our values and that the residents who are here today, who all turned out on short notice, expect us to do something and to express their values as well. So my personal opinion is that we should still act tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Okay, I'm not planning to say anything today. I think it's extremely, very sad day for our city. My job is a proud City Council. My job is to represent the people. And I'm so disappointed for him. In 2016 November, I supported him. I think I gave him a second chance. I gave him a second chance, and I told him, okay, if you kind of fell through the crack again, not only, okay, you have to resign your seat of a mayor protem or a mayor, you have to resign as a City Council, okay? And he said, yes. If I do this again, I will resign. And that is his promise. And even I really like his, this person as a politician and with a lot of similar ideology, but this thing is, cannot be forgiven, okay? This thing is, we need to be an example for our children, okay? We need to stand up and tell people, say, we are some people, we are proud as a City Council. We represent you. We proudly represent you as a model. And we have to work very hard, okay, to represent you guys, to have well-being of the city. And for today, sitting over here with this embarrassment, okay, for our city, and I strongly urge him, even a lot of time, we have a similar vote, and I really need his vote. But this is so big, okay, for our city, our city reputation. So I was thinking about, you are, what you're making. You have to take the consequence, responsible accountability about what you're doing. So in this way, tonight, we need to do something for this thing. He really disappointed not only the City Council, but, okay, the residents of West Covina. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Warsaw.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I supported Mike in the ceremonial position of mayor when his turn came. And I would still do that under the same circumstances back almost five and a half months ago, six months ago. But today, we need to make a decision on an incident that occurred that there is no report on, but a lot of things leading to the problem that he's had and that he stated he's had for years, and that he seems to be failing on, and that's to stay away from Mike and I have not voted a lot on the same things, but I respect him for his decisions that he has made, even though I haven't agreed with him when it comes to making decisions that we've had to vote on. I don't necessarily respect the way that he has treated his body and his family. I hope he gets more help, because I know he's had some. I hope his family still supports him in getting through this problem. And I will support him in getting through this problem. But as far as being mayor, I think he should have resigned as mayor today. I don't have a problem that he didn't resign from the council yet. I think we need to wait and see what that report says. And it is not our decision. We don't make that decision up here. You do. You elected him. You can have him removed by a recall. We don't do that. All we do is make a decision on mayor. Frankly, if he's found to be guilty, I hope he does what he said he would do when Councilman Wu asked him, "Will you resign from the council?" And if that is found to be true, I hope that he does it. But again, it is not my decision to do that.
Thank you. Okay, I have a little statement I would like to read, because this is really dear to me. And I am a very passionate man. I understand we all have faults. None of us are perfect. But we have to deal with all of our demons. And this is something that was brought upon only the council, but was brought upon every resident in the city of West Covina. So I'd like to read this. It says, "We are gathered here tonight with solemn mood to confront a very serious issue within our city. We all voted into office. We were sworn an oath, an oath to support the Constitution of the United States and laws of the state of California and all local ordinance. We agree to faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of our office according to the law and to the best of our ability. We all knew that the position we were elected to put in, in the position of leadership and authority within this great city, a position that deserves our behavior to be both dignified, honest, and law-abiding at all times, not just during the meetings or events. Our City Council strives to stay involved with our residents and the youth of our community through events such as the Red Ribbon Rally, where absence of substance abuse is promoted. And our Student Government Day, where this youth of our city with political aspirations youth who look up to our positions of leadership and local city government. Spend the day at City Hall, participating alongside city leaders in the running of the local government. Our mayorship, which is an honorary position, should be held with a high regard and should be conducted honorably at all times, both during and outside business hours. Being an elected official, we all know that our actions, both during and outside business hours, can be held against us if detrimental. Our bad decisions link our reputation with the city's reputation. And as a council, what we allow to continue again and again only puts gas on the flames. Not every decision in this office is an easy one, but we must cast aside any personal feelings. I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say, we wish Spence a speedy recovery in beating his demons. However, we have the city of West Covina's reputation and the interests of all the residents to be considered first. Our residents have voted us into office to be their voice, with the expectations that we are in good character and the expectations that we are capable of making all-around good decisions. They voted us in to consider each and every one of them as we pass measures that will impact their lives in this city. And they expect us to do so with a clear mind. That being said, with a heavy heart and sadness, I, like I said, I have called this meeting tonight to do something that has never been done before in our city of West Covina, to remove a mayor from his position as mayor." a mayor from his position as mayor. At this time, I would like to see if there's any motion to remove the mayor from his position. Councilman Toma.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I would like to move to remove Mr. Spence as mayor effective today and have Mayor Protem Lloyd Johnson immediately become our mayor and have Councilman Tony Wu take the position of Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, we don't have the Mayor Protem appointment agendized. However, under our rotation policy, in essence, that would kind of happen automatically. What we would like to do is, if we could leave that last piece off, we'll agendize it formally for the June 5th meeting if the motion passes.
That's fine.
Any other comments?
I'd like a little bit of clarification, if I can. If we don't have a mayor, the Mayor Protem automatically takes over. Is that correct, in the interim, until one's appointed?
You mean, if you remove the mayor and you don't appoint a new mayor tonight?
Yes.
Then, yes, the Mayor Protem would effectively act, would be the acting mayor, in essence.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With that, I'd like to amend the motion that we remove Mike Spence, but that we don't appoint a mayor until our next regular meeting, which gives, this was a 24-hour notice. So most of the public that might have wanted to come tonight is probably not here or didn't even hear about it, and I think we owe that to the audience and to all of the residents of West Covina to be here to state their comments at that point in time. Since we're looking at Mayor Protem Johnson taking over as mayor, he'll be acting as that for the next couple of weeks, so I don't really see any problem with that, but it gives all of the people of West Covina the opportunity to be here and to speak their mind prior to an appointment.
If I can weigh in, there was a motion and a second, so are you asking to amend the motion?
So my understanding is that you are asking to, it's essentially a substitute motion, to have the, to have, to vote on having, to remove Mr. Spence as the mayor. In effect, Mayor Protem Johnson will become the mayor in the interim and then have it agendized to be, to have the formal appointment of mayor at the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We need four votes for this motion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. That's fine.
You're agreeing to amend the motion, then?
Yes, correct.
Does the second concur? Mr. Wu?
I would just like to chime in a little bit, you know. We made the motion tonight, which we are making a motion to vote on, removing Mr. Spence as a mayor. That's something that we said we've set out to, I felt that we should have set out to do, and that's something that we have accomplished after the vote we vote on. So I would agree with our council members if that's what they want to do. I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's an understanding that officially, Mr. Spence is no longer mayor after the vote, and the duties that he would hold as a mayor that come with that are suspended.
Yes, the Mayor Protem would act in place of the vacant mayor position.
And those also goes with the boards that he sits on as mayor. He wouldn't be allowed to sit on those. This has to do with, there are certain boards that you have to be mayor to be on them.
Those that require you to be mayor, yes, there would be, there actually wouldn't be a mayor filling those positions, so the Mayor Protem is alternate, presumably, in those situations, would attend those meetings. Any others that require affirmative appointment would need to be agendized.
And that problem, I don't have a problem. So if we have no other discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Toma?
Aye.
Warsaw?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
It's a four-oath, so this is passed, and it's a final that Mayor Spence has been removed as mayor and all of his duties has been stripped. At this time, if there's any other comments from the mayor, I'd like to call this meeting to an end.